Good evening. Welcome to the City Council Meeting of November the 28th. I'm clerk, would you read your call?
Mr. Shyland.
Here.
Ms. Gray.
Here.
Mr. Moore.
Here.
Ms. Reclu. Mr. Schiverdecker.
Here.
Mr. Stone.
Present.
Mr. Vaughn.
Present.
And Mr. West. Seven council members present, one absent.
Do you please rise with me, Pastor Bruce Williams, to let us begin seeing him. Ask you to leave us in the invocation, sir.
Praise the church. Heavenly Father, we're grateful for such a beautiful day as you've given us. And we do not take them for granted. We're nigh into December and it's still early fall, the weather. Grateful, Lord, for your blessings on our community and Mid-America. I pray tonight and ask you to continue to bless our neighbors in Texas and Louisiana, Florida, Southern Georgia, Caribbean, and the old country of Mexico following the hurricanes, earthquakes back in August and September. We must not forget them and the hardship that millions still face. We pray for the victims' families of the mass casualty killings in Manhattan, Las Vegas, and Sutherland, Texas. And we ask you, especially during this season, to continue to comfort those that grieve and mourn those losses. In our own community, Lord, we pray for the shepherd of St. Peter's Parish, Father Bussman and his family, Lord, and we ask you to bless this parish. It covers a lot of our community. We pray for comfort and assurance for them. In our city family, Lord, I want to add a name, Lord, tonight, to the long list of maintenance prayers that we pray regularly. That would be for Jaco Bowman. He's my recycle driver and he was seriously injured last week and remains in serious condition. We just pray for his recovery and for good people to take care of him and help him to recoup his physical health. In addition, I pray for Chief Myers and the mayor, Mr. and Mrs. Reclu, Mr. Shyland, Mr. Millor, Gabriel Polston, and any and all others who are part of our city family. Bless this session tonight as always. Bless those that are here to participate and any decisions that are made, we pray, Lord, that they're pleasing to you. We thank you, Lord, for this wonderful community and this wonderful nation that is our home. Bless those that protect us locally and those that defend liberty and freedom that wear the uniform of the United States. We pray all this in your name. Amen.
At the beginning of each council meeting, we set a time aside for anyone present who would like to share a concern with the council that is not already on the agenda. We just ask that you give us your name and your address and limit your comments to no longer than five minutes, of which the clerk will time. So at this time, I invite anyone who has an issue they'd like to share with the council, please come forward. So at this, seeing no one coming forward to move on, we do have a public hearing this evening. And it's for the purpose of approving or denying a request by Ricky Lacy of H&R Taxi. So, and the way we'll do this is that I will make three calls for anyone wishing to speak in opposition of Mr. Lacy's request and H&R Taxi. And if upon that ceasing of that, then I'll make three calls for anyone wishing to speak in favor of the, of his request. And I guess I need to say what his request is. Looks like he's wanting to add additional vehicles into his business fleet, which the ordinance requires him to do. So, so at this time, I've declared the meeting, the public hearing open. And I will now make issue the first call for anyone wishing to speak in opposition to Mr. Lacy adding an additional vehicle to his business fleet.
Opposition against?
Yes.
Yeah, I'll do it twice. And seeing no one coming forward, I'll now issue the second call. Is there anyone present who wishes to speak in opposition of H&R Taxi adding an additional Again, seeing no one coming forward, I'll issue the third and final call. Is there anyone present who wishes to speak in opposition of H&R Taxi adding an additional Again, seeing no one coming forward, I will now issue three calls for anyone who'd like to speak in favor of Mr. Lacy adding an additional vehicle. First call, is there anyone present who wishes to speak in favor of Mr. Lacy's additional vehicle? Please come forward to the mic.
Hi, I'm Kathy. I work with Rick. And I've got my car that you're trying to approve, and I also bought an additional one today. In case, for some reason, I blow a tire or have any problems, I've still got a backup car.
Very good. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
So at this, at this time, is there anyone who'd like to speak? I'll make the second call, anyone who would like to speak in favor of Mr. Lacy's adding an additional vehicle. Again, seeing no one coming forward, I'll make the third and final call. Is there anyone present who wishes to speak in favor of H&R Taxi adding an additional Again, seeing no one coming forward, I'll now declare that the public hearing is closed. Thank you. We'll move on with the, our agenda. And the next item on the agenda is the approval of the consent agenda. The consent agenda is included in your agenda and includes the council minutes of October the 24th, the minutes from the November 14th meeting, the acceptance of the Director of Administration report, and acknowledgement of board and commission reports of human rights that met on October 30, and the park board that met on November the 7th. Is there any item there that council would like to remove from the consent agenda?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
On item D, I do not want to remove human rights from the consent agenda, but I just want to point out to all council people, on December the 8th, at noon, it'd be the Jane Beanham Bike Commanitarium Board, and I'd like to invite them for the Human Rights Commission if you'd like to come and see the winner for 2017 and have lunch, a light lunch with us on that afternoon. That's it.
Very good. Thank you. Anyone else who has a comment or would like to remove an item from the consent agenda?
Motion to approve consent agenda.
Thank you. I have a motion and second to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor of the motion, please signify saying yes.
Yes.
All those opposed, no. Very good. Thank you. Consent agenda is approved.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I have an issue. I have no copy of the page, I go digitally and the internet is not working. I cannot pull it up. So can I get a copy? Thank you.
What documents did you name? I'm sorry.
Jeff's.
Jeff, what documents do you need?
Oh, we'll share. It's okay. This is two meetings in a row that I've had that issue, so I'm not sure what's going on with you here. Thank you. Sorry to interrupt.
You're very welcome.
Okay, very good. Thank you. But now, I have the financial report for October presented, and we can accept at the end of that. Your host log is with coming forward, and we'll turn it over to you. Thank you, Kathy.
First of all, I'll tell you, we have recorded nine months of sales tax, and we are right on par with last year, which I think compared to some other communities that I've heard of is a good thing, because a lot of municipalities in the state are seeing a decrease. So we are at least holding our own. Not a lot going on this month. I ordinarily would report the real estate and personal property tax numbers that we can expect for 2017. However, I had difficulty in getting those from the county. So they'll be on the next report. Nothing unusual. Filing reimbursements for the wastewater treatment plant has become more or less an ordinary course of business. But we did file for a reimbursement of $392,000, which we received in November. I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Any questions? Mr. Dole's law?
And those reimbursements are coming without problems, without questions or issues?
Yeah. The state knows better than question.
I think the state's always glad to add to that long. Means they can kick in more interest.
Motion to approve financial report?
Second.
Have a motion and second to accept the financial report for the month of October. Any further discussion of that motion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify saying yes.
Yes.
All those opposed, no. Okay. Now move on to unfinished business. We have the smart grid update. Mr. Darrell, you want to speak wisely, of course. And we're also, the next item is the wastewater treatment plant, so if you want to just continue to warm hearts, that'd be great.
We've had, you know, several questions about the smart grid, so I thought tonight we might just back up and start with where we started. In '09, we was looking at upgrading the electric and gas meters. We had gas meters and electric meters that'd been out there since the 40s. One house actually had one in since 1938. And when I was looking at doing that, we was looking at the new technologies and said, maybe we'll do a drive-by system. So we went to one of the neighboring communities, looked at their drive-by system, came back, and if I remember right, we used Southwind as the, as a test spot, if I remember correctly. And I thought at that time, we would make the electric meters and gas meters where you would drive by and read them. The water meters, most of them had touch reads. So if they was reading the route, they would just basically walk down the sidewalk like the mailman and read the water meter with the touch read, and the electric and gas meter reads would just come to them as they walked past. Well, then in 2009's, when the DOE came out with that grant application, so we applied for the grant application. And I think a lot of times, we use smart grid as probably not the correct term, but it was a smart grid grant, so that's why it kind of got tagged on it. Smart meters, which is what we've got, only account for 25% of the funding. There was roughly $2 million put out for smart meters, $64 million for customer service, a half a billion for electric distribution, quarter of a billion for transmission. And then those that wanted to integrate two or more of them, there was almost $5 billion put out. So there was 99 projects awarded. That's, that's where we started. As far as the results, they laid us out of a lot of the reporting requirements. I think we was like the fifth from the smallest of the smart meters. Our total project was slightly over $5 million. They, they paid half. But a lot of companies had to put their results in. Central Maine, what they came back was, was they decreased their truck rolls by 97%, reduced their number of estimated bills. They could do prepay now, which we could do prepay. We couldn't without the smart meters. Service request connects was completed usually within a couple hours instead of the next day's service. And they started energy program with the seventh and eighth graders where they gave the seventh and eighth graders access to their home meter information and compared it and basically started with the youth trying to do training, teaching. They did a pilot program where they did bill alerts once a week with the pilot group. They saw a reduction of roughly 1.8% consumption off that pilot group. TVA distributor Tri-State, which is in the southeast part of Tennessee, they did a prepayment. They've had some customers, I think they said 30 per month, sign up for prepay. That way, they didn't have to put up a deposit, they just did prepay. They paid. When the electric meter ran out, it ran out, and they prepaid off credit card. Time of use rates. And then, like we're using, if the power goes out, we know it. And that was Central Maine's results also. To date, there's about 16.6 million so-called smart meters out in the system. That is part of the smart grid. There's also smart relays and substations to recover from outages, and smart distribution switches to help recover and reroute power to the distribution system. We do have some smart switches. When the state hospital rebuilt, they wanted redundancy. So there is smart switches on our circuits around the hospital that they paid for that will automatically reroute power from three substations. So that part of the smart grid, we do have. We got some smart switches. And then the rest of it was for large energy storage batteries and such as that. So that's kind of how we got to where we're at. This past month, I believe Kathy billed four routes, water, electric, and gas. And they were all successful. So the heartbeat has started, finally. But that's, that's kind of where we're at and how we got to where we're at. And, you know, I'm getting pretty old now. I remember when I first started, we read with a book. And you wrote down the readings, and you brought the readings in, and you gave them to somebody in the office, and they entered them into the computer. And then we went to the, the machine where you punched them in and they automatically uploaded. So I mean, it's, it's an ongoing thing. It's, it's technology, good or bad, that that's happening. We was the only system in the state of Missouri that got a grant, good, bad, or indifferent. And there was 99 awards. So I know there's been a lot of faces change, and you may not know all the history, but that's, that's how we got to where we got to. In the last month, month and a half, we've had two commercial customers that are not large enough to be demand-built, that are buying generators. They need to know what size of generator do we need to buy? We have looked up their history off of the so-called smart meter and gave them what their highest consumptions was in the past summer. So that has happened. And I think you know the stories of the outages and increased notifications that we get on how many places are out of power. So that's, that's the update, unless Bill or Kathy has something else they want to add. That's, that's how we got to where we are.
Any questions? That was great.
I was wondering, why did you pick Southwind? That's a newer addition. Was it easier to install or what?
We was installing gas meters at the time out there, and Dale Tate had to order some gas meters, so that's why we picked Southwind.
Okay. And what percentage, you had mentioned large dollars amount in the beginning. Was that all covered with grants? Is that falling back on us, or where does that money come from?
The whole electric project was slightly over $3 million.
Right.
The Department of Energy paid half of it.
So we had to come up with the rest of it?
Yes, ma'am.
And how did we come up with the rest of it? Did we increase somebody's electric?
No.
Bills or what?
We did not have a rate increase because of this. No, ma'am.
Okay. Now, when you, you've had, in the last meeting, you said something about there was a problem, and this all worked out beautifully. Then you said you don't have everything installed because you was trying to see how this is working. Now do you consider it working well enough that you can go ahead and install your gas and your water as well as your electric?
I think Kathy and I is getting better. I'm not going to say we're ready to install them yet, no. Is that true? We're a lot better than we was June of this year.
And you don't have a clue when you're gonna be able to start in on all of this? Are you getting more grants, or how are we financing all of this?
No, we're not getting any more grants at this time. And the one thing we didn't do before is the water meters, we did not replace. We did the gas and the electric, and Bill helped me, but I think we got them up to nothing was older than 1990. Does that sound right?
Uh-uh. Eighty.
Eighty. We got them to where nothing was older than 1980 out there. The water, we have not done that, too.
Well, it seems like you're focusing on the electric more than anything else. Is there a reason for that?
Yes, ma'am, there is. Everything has to talk to the electric. The electric is the backhaul. So it don't do any good to put water and gas out there without the electric. The electric had to come first.
And you have done testing on the water and the gas so far?
Yes.
And all is good?
All is good on those right now.
I think that's, that's pretty much covering what I had to ask you. Thank you.
Okay.
Anyone else? Thank you, Darrell. Good update.
We got wastewater down.
You want to do wastewater?
Wastewater. Well, we didn't stink up the town for Thanksgiving, so we're all happy about that. They started taking that inner ditch down Friday. Today, I don't know, four inches in part of the bottom. It's basically empty. The good news is the concrete walls that we haven't seen in years because there's always water in them, we didn't see any sloughing, any kind of concrete deterioration at all so far on the inner ditch. Assuming the outer ditch will look the same, but the inner ditch looks, concrete-wise, very We had Plan A, B, and possibly C. I think we used part of Plan B, but it, it went better than I think we thought it would. And there was...
Yes and no.
Yeah. It wasn't, I mean, we, we tried to paint to ourselves what all can go wrong and how can we prepare for that.
I think it went, in my opinion, it went way smoother with less problems, but it's just taken longer than anybody thought it would.
Yeah. The timeframe probably drug out, but there wasn't any, oh, my gosh, what are we going to do now moments? If that makes sense.
Nothing unexpected.
Yeah. The weather's been great, thank goodness.
Can't wait to do a whole project. Doesn't really go bad, just takes a long time.
But the demolition of the existing inflight, the green old wood building that was up on top of the screws, it's gone. So, you know, the outlook of the whole plant looks different you drive through the gate.
The, the inner ditch is empty right now, which for, I was going to say, first time in your lifetime, but probably not. It's prob, first time's probably been empty in 30 years. So if any of you want, have any desire to see the bottom of a oxidation ditch, you've got to go out there either like this week or in about 30 days, they'll be taking down the outer ditch, so you will see that one.
So what did you do to accomplish this? What did you drain? Where did you put whatever you took out of there?
We moved, there's, there's two, there's two loops
Right.
of waste. They set pumps up, and they pumped most of the inner ditch into the outer ditch, from one loop to the other. And then they put a bobcat and squeegees down there and squeegeed up all the grit and the sand and stuff in the bottom. 98% of the liquid was just literally pumped over to the other ditch.
Okay. Now, does this mean last, was it, anyway, wherever it was, we had all that rain and you had the fire department down there flushing stuff out into Stinson Creek, we're not going to have that problem anymore?
I'm not going to say that.
I'm not going to, there's two different questions, two different issues.
Okay.
What we're doing now doesn't really have anything to do with why we were doing that.
I guess what I'm asking, though, now that you got this point, that's not going to happen again?
I can't say that. Two, two different, two different causes caused the things that we're talking, that you're asking about. A different thing caused, what you're asking about is an entirely different reason or problem.
But to me, it's all wastewater. Why isn't it all connected?
Because it's, it's not.
There's waste, and then there's waste? Don't make sense.
What we're doing today is not going to have an impact on why they were down there.
Okay. So if this occurs like it did in the past, we may possibly be pumping stuff back out into Stinson Creek?
In the event of a heavy rain, heavy, heavy rain, in order to save the entire treatment plant from flooding, we would put it directly into the stream again.
And that's going to be okay?
And under those circumstances, I'm going to say, we would get our hands slapped and told not to do it again, but they would be understanding as to why we did it. Just as they were last time.
I'm thinking of our stream team and how hard they work, and here we are polluting what they're thinking of.
Yeah.
That's the answer?
But we didn't lose the entire wastewater plant.
But we, we didn't lose the entire plant. And when all that water hits the sewer plant, you got to do something with it.
I understand that part, but I'm just thinking of the pollution in Stinson Creek. And our stream team, they won these awards, they did a beautiful job.
Oh, they're a great organization.
And then here we turn around and have to do this in order to save another? You're punishing one to save one.
Well, it's not like it occurs all the time. It's not like it occurs all the time.
I don't care whenever you're putting that nasty back in Stinson Creek. Look what you're doing, and how long does it take to clean that up? I mean, it's, it's there today, that doesn't mean it's still, some of the residue isn't going to be there 10 years from now.
But we dealing with Mother Nature, so sometimes these things happen, so it's not that we meant to do it.
Well, but Mother Nature, the only thing Mother Nature did was cause the rain. It didn't cause us to have to throw that nasty back out into Stinson Creek.
Mrs. Gray, I was at a meeting several years, several years ago now, where Darrell explained that our sewer plant, and you help me out here, does what Mother Nature does at that plant in, what, 26 miles, was it?
Yeah. Basically, the treatment plant, you know, concentrates time and space of what Mother Nature does.
So the bottom line is 26 mi, if we have to do that, Mother Nature will end up mitigating what we've dumped on it in 26 miles down the, down the Stinson Creek, on south of the, of the sewer.
And so then who are we putting it on?
The people downstream.
That's not very neighborly.
You're right. But we don't have that choice.
Well... So Darrell, what's the timeline for the outer ditch?
Probably 30, well, 30 days.
We'll start, we'll start, it's about a 30-day process. We'll start the second one in about 30 days.
Okay.
Counsel Lady Gray, I had the great honor of going with the mayor and Mr. Johnson out there today. I think if you was to go out and listen to them and the guys, you would learn how the operation is. And it, and it wasn't the smell, so it was, it was a wonderful, nice, warm day, and I got to see the wall since it was originally built for once. I've been 30 years. So I...
But it still doesn't fix the problem.
But they will explain the whole process, how it works to you, engineer out there.
Very good. Any other question? Yes, sir. Go right ahead. When was the last time we had an event where we had to have another department go down there and pump it out? I can't remember it.
Three years?
Probably. Long time.
It hadn't been that long, no, Mike, because it was on our, our Facebook. That's how I seen this, was on Facebook.
Twice in how many years, Darrell?
I think twice since I've been here, and I've been here 11 years.
I just don't remember it happening that often.
Usually tied to a major flood.
I mean, we get the rain, we had to do something with it because our plant can't handle so much, so we had to...
Well, it isn't the normal rainwater that I'm talking about. I'm talking about the other stuff that goes out there.
It's primarily rain. I understand there's other stuff in there, too.
Hey, Darrell.
But we're continuing to work on it eye to eye, so that's...
Darrell, I do have one question. When you were cleaning that out, and you wasn't sure how much sludge you, did you have to put some of it on our retention bank?
Yes, we had to put some on the retention bank, not as much as we thought we were going to have to. But we did have to put some on the retention bank.
We've still got the outer ditch to go, so...
Yeah.
Then, does what you call it take that then, once it's dry?
Once we get it dry, it'll be landfilled, yes.
Then it goes there. Okay.
What was the question and the answer?
It'll be landfilled what we...
Yeah, well, horse mark.
No, 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 no. Horse, he will not take this stuff.
Oh, he won't take it?
No, this will be landfilled.
This stuff will go to the landfill.
Oh, okay.
We'll load it up, and after it dries out and quits running, we will load it up and dump, and roll offs from JC and take it to the Jesse landfill.
Yeah. Yeah. JC's going to take care of it.
So this isn't going out to the country?
No.
That was a complaint I had.
Thank you very much. Now move on to council concerns. It's time that...
Oh, actually.
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you. New business. And it's, our item A is approval of the request that you heard at the public hearing of H&R Taxi to change its name and also to incorporate an additional vehicle into their business fleet.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I have no problem if anybody else is changing their name and that, but my question is, we don't have to do it tonight, maybe first year. Do they really need to come back as long as the camp, as long as the administration knows that they're currently licensing proper insurance to us to know if they going to add another cab or not? Because I don't know what her business is. I don't know if she can afford three cabs or two cabs or whatever. I mean, to me, it's just save them time and save y'all time doing a public hearing. That's just my feeling. I'm a ride or run.
So the reason, that's an awesome question. The reason we do that is, in our code, it does state that, so it would require a code change, but that's something, I know we get this question a lot, of if someone's just adding a car, we have to post it for 14 days. Why do they have to wait? Why do we have to come do another public hearing if they've already been approved for their initial license? So that is, that's up to you guys, if you would like to change that process.
Well, I'm going by, I'll go with your guidance on it. I'm just throwing it out there. To me, it's like...
So would it require a change in the charter?
In the code, just in our code.
I think if you were to present it, we would definitely review it.
So noted.
I agree with that. I mean, especially when anybody could come to an Uber or Lyft without even coming to us.
Right.
It doesn't make sense anymore, honestly.
We'll look at that.
Very good.
And she, she had left, and kind of one thing I did want to make you guys aware of, I put a copy of an additional vehicle. She provided me with this today. Obviously, it will be up to you guys to decide if you're okay with combining that into the fleet. Since it's in our code, if you don't authorize this vehicle tonight, we would do a separate public hearing, and she, and Mr. Lacy would come back for this one vehicle in order to incorporate it in the fleet. So for ease of use, it might be best to...
Motion to approve with the added vehicle.
Second.
I have a question. She stated up there that she was adding this vehicle and then purchased another vehicle, in case it broke down, do we have...
So she actually, these, the vehicle she was talking about initially were the ones described here, and this is the additional vehicle she just purchased yesterday.
Okay.
So this is that additional...
So it's not two vehicles?
No. Well, I mean, it is multiple because it's the ones that were included in your packet, and then this is the one that she just purchased, yes.
Well, it's this one plus the ones that were previously approved, I think, and then now this one.
Right.
Do we have to publicize this?
We do have to put a public notice out, which we did. We don't put, obviously, all the vehicle information, but the public notice states that we'll have a public hearing to approve or deny additional vehicles in the fleet. And I also threw in there to change the name. We don't technically have to do that, but they're changing the name from H&R Taxi to Fulton Taxi.
Do we care how many vehicles they have?
That's up to you, Ms. Gray, all of you.
As long as they're licensed and insured, I couldn't care less if they got 10. As long as you keep the track.
Did we get a second?
But if, but if the city doesn't know...
Mr. Stone seconded it.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Stone seconded it.
Yeah.
Yeah. Call the question. I have a note, I have a...
Motion.
Motion, thank you. And a second, on the floor, to approve the request of H&R Taxi or the Fulton Taxi and adding another vehicle. Any further discussion or question?
Just one. Now, Mike, I was not taking away anything else, just the fact that the public hearing required. I still want the administration to do their part, but I just think the public hearing was kind of...
Yeah.
Okay. Well, I didn't know if you...
Yeah, I got you. Does the name H&R? I automatically think H&R Block. Can, I mean, there's no problem with them doing that?
Well, that's what they've been.
That's what they've been. They're going to be changing to Fulton Taxi.
That's what they were, they're changing it now.
So he's adding some new drivers, which the woman that was here tonight is going to be one of those drivers and new vehicles, and they're going under Fulton Taxi.
Okay.
Very good.